Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the September 21st, 2021 Board of Selectment Agenda Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, four selectmen present this evening, as well as town administrator Derek.
Thank you. Are we expecting town council? I believe we are.
I think we are.
Okay, thank you.
There he is.
There he is.
There he is, okay.
He's also here.
Excellent. Good evening, Mr. Bowen. I'm going to ask for the Pledge of Allegiance from Mr. Titlebaum, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Announcements, I'm going to go, let's see, first, Mr. Muniz, how are you for announcements?
Announcements, I'm gonna pass on that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, just one, WCTV on the Saturday, from 12 to 4 is holding an open house, and then at their 505 Main Street headquarters, and then at 4 o'clock, they will be having their annual meeting where they elect the members of the board that governs them. President Rebhan Buckminster asked me to make this announcement, so I'm getting it out there. Once again, Saturday, 12 to 4, open house, go in, see what they do, sign up, join, and then their annual election annual meeting is at 4 o'clock.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tropiano?
Nothing from me.
And I have nothing, thank you so much. Citizens' comments, I don't see any hands up.
Well, I'd give it a little bit.
I still don't see any hands up. Oops, Catherine, we're going to be talking with you later on because of the watershed ride, unless you want to speak to something else now, that would be fine.
You'd have to recognize her and put her in.
Okay. Then I would ask that we allow Ms. Garofoli in. Good evening, can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, this is Kat Garofoli on Set Bay Center with Buzzards Bay Coalition. I just wanted to comment during public comment for a couple of different reasons. One, we this week just started our after-school programs through the Wareham Care and the Wareham Sale through the Wareham Public School System, and I just wanted to make families aware that our afternoon after-school programs are free. We're doing specialized programs for grades three through five and specialized programs grades five through seven. The three through five focus on kayak and paddling exploration, and the grades five through seven are a learn-to-sail program. And then we are going to be partnering with the Wareham High School carpentry teacher, and we're going to be building some boats at the bottom of the bathhouse, so we're pretty excited. We have plenty of room for enrollment. All these programs are free and funded through the Department of Ed, and I just wanted to make the group aware of that. And we also have started our fall adult programs, includes a weekly kayak tour, yoga, and kayaking over at Wicket Island. We're also going to do a series of learn-to-shelf fish programs once the shellfish areas open up. And so please, if you visit onsetbaycenter.org, we have plenty of opportunities there for people to get out on the bay and, you know, always feel free to come in and say hello to me. So I just wanted to take a few moments to say that, and I'm sure I'll talk to the rest of you later.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for letting us know that the exorbitant price tag is free.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. I see Mr. Mulligan with his hand up. Do you choose to speak, Mr. Mulligan? Would you? Oops, yep, okay. We...
No, no, I'm sorry, I hit that by accident, sorry.
Okay, so we remove him, thank you. I see no other citizens' comments. Okay, we'll go to boards' comments, Mr. Muniz, please.
That's a busy agenda. I don't need to say too much about anything.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano?
Also good.
Okay, and myself, also good. So we will move on to appointments, reappointments, and interviews. Mr. Tropiano?
I have the Wareham Redevelopment Authority, Dan Butler. Is he here?
Yes, he is.
He is, he's in the waiting room, so we need to bring him in.
He says he's not particularly computer savvy, but we'll let him in anyway.
Look, if he managed to log on, that's about all you need to do. From there, it's pretty simple.
Okay, he's there.
Yeah, he's just gonna need to...
Unmute?
Unmute and show his face.
Unmute at the top, there you go.
There you go. Good evening, Mr. Butler.
Hello, folks.
Good job.
Hi.
Thank you for the tutorial.
Okay, why don't you just introduce yourself briefly to the other members of the board, the Appointing Authority, who have not met you?
Okay, my name's Dan Butler. I've been a resident here in Wareham permanently since 2017. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
My wife and I bought our home in 2013 anticipating that we would retire here, and we were really looking forward to it, and as we expected, we really enjoy Wareham. We enjoy the town, the people of the town, and I finally got around to the idea that I probably ought to do something in return and perform some civic responsibility. When I saw that redevelopment was an important part of our master plan for the town, I thought maybe I could make some contribution in that regard, and so I threw my hat in the ring and offered to be a contributor, if at all possible, as a citizen-at-large on the WRA.
Thank you. Mr. Muniz, do you have any questions?
I've seen his application, I don't know if he wants to say something about his background so the general public would have an understanding. If you'd care to...
If you choose to, Mr. Butler, you don't have to, it's up to you.
Okay, well, I can summarize quickly that I was a, I've been a public servant, spent over 30 years as a federal employee, as a naval officer. I had experience in law enforcement, spent 25 of those years in Washington DC. So the vast majority of my experience is at the federal level. I've had formal training and education in economics, economic analysis, finances, public policy, budgeting, programming, and I've had quite a bit of experience, actually, in program management at the federal level. And that would be a pretty concise summary, I would say, of my past background and experience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, do you have any questions up here?
No, I just want to let you know, Dan, you're gonna really like this because we work way better than the federal government does.
I have no doubt. Yeah, I can't wait.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Patrick, way to set the bar low for his expectations. So the Redevelopment Authority voted unanimously 5-0-0. It was actually during Mr. Swenson's last meeting to recommend Dan. We had four people who initially applied. One of them did not respond to the interview request, the other one withdrew. We interviewed also, in addition to Dan, we interviewed Mrs. Brenda Ekstrom. So she was interviewed, but we voted 5-0-0 to recommend Dan.
I have no further comments, so I would ask for a motion, please.
I move that we appoint Dan Butler to the Wareham Redevelopment Authority to a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Tropiano, seconded by Mr. Muniz. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, so it's 4-0-0. Thank you very much. The papers for you to be sworn in, Dan, are in the Selectment's Office, which is on the third floor of Town Hall. You will pick your papers up and go take your oath of office. When, as soon as you can, because the next meeting is, Mr. Titlebaum, is it?
We do not have one this week.
Okay.
I spoke with Clark Buckland, he said it wasn't necessary. So we will have your first meeting next week, Thursday at 11:00. So you'll pick up the paperwork in the Selectment's Office and go down to the clerk and get sworn in.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for volunteering. Excellent. Yes, thank you. The second, Mr. Tropiano?
The Cable Advisory Committee term from Matt DeHill and Peter Titlebaum, and I move we add them to the committee, the terms to expire upon completion of the signing of the contract.
Do I have a choice?
No, is there a second to that motion?
I think Mr. Muniz should hear my plea. Do I have a choice?
No, he does not. He can't hear your plea.
Peter, if you put in for it, you want to be on it.
He's on.
I mean, I know what the drill is, I just don't look forward to it.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Tropiano and Muniz, may I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 4-0-0. And so you know the drill about getting signed in.
Peter, that's the best way to get a job, is to not want it.
Yeah, exactly. I'm going to, we have a 7:15 hearing, so I'm gonna ask you to skip over to...
The Lucky Goat Brewing.
Yeah, well, that's the hearing. So let's go to the application from Buzzards Bay Coalition for the one-day liquor license for October 8th, which is their grand opening, please.
Do you want to bring her in, or should I just make the motion?
Kat, do you think you need to speak about this one-day liquor license? It is for the grand opening, which is on October 8th. Buzzards Bay Coalition will host the long-awaited ribbon cutting to celebrate the opening of the Onset Bay Center. Kat will be considered the manager in charge on the day of the event. The program will run from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM and will include some light refreshments, as well as beer or wine. At this time, the Coalition intends to use the Cohog Republic Waterfront Eatery, located at 197 Onset Avenue, to supply the food and beverages. The Cohog Republic Waterfront Eatery will be responsible for safely serving beer and wine to the legal-aged guests.
I move we approve the application from Buzzards Bay Coalition for a one-day liquor license for October 8th, 2021, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
Second.
There's a motion made and a second, just double checking.
Thank you.
Sorry. Kat, I don't see an application. Well, let me, Kat, could you, could we bring Garofoli back, please? I have a couple of questions for her. Okay, thank you. So I just read the announcement, and so the liquor will be served at Cohog Republic, is that correct?
No, no, no. So the application itself, it was double-sided, so if you flip one of the pages, it should be on the backside of the checklist.
So effectively, the Cohog Republic is providing the bartender service?
That's correct, and they're also gonna be serving cups of chowder. And so all that it will be, it's not a full bar, it's just gonna be one type of beer and a red wine and a white wine, and that's all that we're gonna serve. And we're only allowing one per legal-aged visitor.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've gonna channel Selectman Slaven here, because I know the question is in his mind, I am sure. That means that the Cohog Republic is not supplying the alcohol at all because they couldn't do that, but that the license holder is independently, or the would-be license holder, is independently securing the alcohol that the Cohog Republic employees will serve, correct?
That's how it needs to be.
Then that is how it shall be.
Okay, great. Just for clarification purposes, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Muniz, do you have any other questions, sir? That was probably the one you had.
Well, no, it was actually the insurance binder and was it SafeServe or... Or what's the one for the liquor?
Oh, tips?
Tips.
Tips. So I think that Cassie had said that they were waiting, awaiting those. So it's fine, it's just pending receipt of it, and then we'll release the license, if that's okay.
Cassie does have the insurance binder. I am just waiting for the copy of the tip certification from the Cohog.
She did not scan that to us, but that would be the motion. So may I have a motion, please, to approve the application for the one-day liquor license for October 8th?
I already made it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I seconded.
All right, fine, thank you. So TNT, and no other questions, Mr. Muniz or myself?
No, I'm good.
Okay, fine, thank you. So your motion, Mr. Tropiano, includes awaiting the tip certificate and the updated insurance binder.
It's, anything that's missing in the file needs to be...
Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Muniz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 4-0-0. It is now 7:15, and I'm going to ask that the...
Motion that we open the Lucky Goat Brewing hearing, Lucky Goat Brewing LLC, 379 Main Street, Wareham, for public amusement license and public amusement license for live entertainment under the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Law.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made to open the hearing by Mr. Tropiano, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Muniz?
Yes.
White side, yes. Could we bring in... Dan, no, Caitlin, I guess, and...
Mr. Peabody?
I don't see him.
Yeah, I don't see Mr. Peabody.
And I'm presuming that Caitlin is Caitlin Heard?
Okay, yeah, it's Caitlin, so we need to bring her in.
Yeah, it is Caitlin Heard. Okay. When you are unmuted, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Caitlin Heard, 2269 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham.
Erin Perry, 2269 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham.
Kendall Peabody, Tamlinwood Ave, Wareham.
Oh, so you're all on the same call? Thank you. Just for the public's knowledge, there are three people who are speaking under the label of Caitlin, thank you. Okay, ladies, lady and gentlemen, do you have something that you'd like to say? Your application for a, I think it's a foosball game, is that correct?
Foosball entertainment.
Yeah.
Yeah, just some pretty straightforward, just wanted to start providing live entertainment. Probably one of the two top things people ask about whenever they come in is, you know, someone also gave us a foosball table, so we asked for that, you know, people can play. Also, there's no charge for that. Just for fun, you know, we'll get too rambunctious or anything, it won't get too crazy, just like playing a guitar and music and foosball. Patron's.
Do you have the green cards? The return receipt cards, the notifications to your butters?
I returned the ones I received. There's three that are, they were delivered, but the addresses that were, like, they went to them, but they weren't home, so there's someone to sign for them, so they're issued a notice saying to her redelivery.
So how many butters did you have to notice, please?
What's that?
How many butters did you have to notify?
There are nine total. I think I got the green cards back for five. There was a few that, one of them was the guy who moved from his PO box, so it's coming back to me, but limbo. One of them was picked up, and the green cards in transit, and the other two are in redelivery. You know, second, they just haven't rearranged it yet, so.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to say on your application?
Nothing, pretty straightforward, I mean, nothing else I can really add, you know.
Thank you. I'm gonna look for comment, the comments from the board, Mr. Muniz, questions, comments?
Are you gonna be having entertainment on Sundays?
No, we, we, we're, our permit's only gonna be for weekdays and Saturdays.
Okay, so, so we wanna, I think we wanna... Do we want to cross that out, or what? That's where I'm a little confused. It says all special and regular hours before and after 1:00 PM. And both boxes are checked, but on your application part, which Cassie wrote, it just says the weekday entertainment in the foosball table. That's all. And it says not applicable on Sunday entertainment. So I was just asking, because if so, would have been additional fee. If not, we're all set.
Yeah.
And the answer is no, that you are not, correct?
Yeah, it's too high, so we decided not to do it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, mentioned, Mr. Muniz, Mr. Titlebaum, any questions?
No, but I'd like to commend Selectman Muniz for trying to get the money in if it was doing owing to us.
I felt bad about it, tell you the truth. I'm sorry for interrupt.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Entertainment of live music are you planning on having?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
It's probably mostly gonna be acoustic, like acoustic music, nothing crazy, nothing like hard rock or...
Yeah, guy with a guitar.
Just more atmosphere-type music.
Okay, all right, because I, you know, I'm not crazy about, you know, basically, when we do these for people like you, we're creating a bar, basically, as opposed to, you know, a restaurant where we have restaurant licenses. And the last, did one of these things, we had a problem where they had acid rock and everything else. It became a real problem. Okay, it's background stuff and that kind of thing.
Yeah, quiet background music.
And not gonna blow up into something else, you know?
We actually like to have conversations with our patrons while they enjoy it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no questions. Is there anyone who would, from the public, who would like to speak in favor of this application? Raise your hand. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against the application? Raise your hand. And I see none. I will accept a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion made to close the hearing, and it is 7:23. Motion made and seconded, roll call vote, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 4-0-0. We have closed the hearing. May I have a motion?
All right, so one of the problems I'm having to make motion is the hours and stuff for this, for entertainment and so on. And the reason why I say that is because the sheet that I was giving with the hours on it is obviously not correct. So I want... Well, it's not, it's not correct. It's...
Right.
It says Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And I know you're not having Sunday, so can you, can you give me an idea of what your hours are, please?
For entertainment?
Yes.
Probably from, would go from maybe five to eight on Thursdays, Fridays, and maybe Fridays will go to nine, and Saturdays will be probably, will be from like, probably one to five, one to six.
All right, so...
You need to be more specific, sir.
Yeah, let's, you can't be probably, you gotta give me a specific hour.
Okay, it'll be from, be from three, three to nine, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays. It'll be from one to, one to six on Saturdays.
Okay, so three to nine, Monday, Monday?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Sorry, Wednesday, Thursday, so Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and Saturday, one to six.
Correct.
Yes. Don't move, I move, we authorize.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Tropiano, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Are there any further questions from the board? Roll call vote, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 4-0-0. I believe the paperwork will be available to you tomorrow afternoon, I'm guessing, Mr. Peabody? Okay?
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Take care.
The application Buzzards Bay Coalition to use town roads in Buzzards Bay watershed ride on Sunday, October 3rd, is you gonna bring them back in?
Sure.
Is she still here? Yep, there she is.
Yeah, she is. Kat, can you come back? Kat Garofoli? Okay, back again. Hi, Kat, could you explain what you want this permit for, please? It is a application for use of town roads for the annual Buzzards Bay watershed ride.
So as many of you are probably aware, for several years, the Coalition's been having this really successful watershed ride that starts all the way in Timberton, Rhode Island, and goes all the way down Woods Hole to, one, help the organization raise annual funds, and also to create a sense of excitement and stewardship across Buzzards Bay. And so this year, the watershed ride is on October 3rd, and right now, it's going, it's setting up to be one of the most successful ones that we've had with just over 400 bicyclists, which is pretty exciting. And so this actually is outside of my department, but I'm happy to try and answer any questions that you may have. I just think that I ended up on the same agenda with our one-day Onset Bay Center permit.
Okay, so it looks like you are going to be using the roads starting on Fearing Hill Road. Can you tell us what the route, what the route is, or do you know?
I, I do not know, as a matter of fact, and I'm sorry to say that, but I can have the new events manager, Jonah, reach out to you and give you the specific route if that would be beneficial.
No, it's supposed to have been done anyway. Yeah, it's the same route as before, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it starts at Fearing Hill, and it does go through Wareham. It goes by the piers, I believe. Yep. And all of the paperwork, other than the name, the specific street names, all of the other paperwork is in order.
Great.
So I will accept either questions or a motion.
I move we approve the event.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Tropiano, seconded by Titlebaum. Any further discussion?
I would just note that the public safety officials have all signed off.
Yes, all of the paperwork is done with the exception of the explicit route.
Just go ahead, I have a quick question. Did... Did the fire department sign off? They probably did. Yeah, here we go. That's on a separate sheet, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will call for the vote. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 4-0-0. Again, the paperwork will be ready probably tomorrow afternoon. And we have an application from the Gleason family, YMCA, to place signs on town property. Do we have somebody here from...
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, let me hang on for a second.
Just briefly, Madam Chairman, going back, speaking about signs, in the... Just briefly, uh, Madam Chairman, going back, speaking about signs, in the Buzzards Bay Coalition's application for the ride, uh, they do ask, uh, to put signs up. So, we, we approved the, what was requested in the application, which would have included that.
Yes, thank you.
Just for the record.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, the two sign locations required, but, or requested by the Y are the corner of County and Fearing Hill, and the corner of Minnit Avenue and Tempest Knob Indian Neck, both of which are okay to do if you soak shoes. Is there any other question or comments about this application? You already moved it, right?
Yes, you gotta get a second.
Yeah.
I, I seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further questions, Mr. Munees?
I just was wondering, um, they only want two signs? Permission for two signs, I mean?
On town.
Alright with me. Okay.
Okay, good. Um, roll call vote, please, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Tropiano, yes. Whiteside, yes. It is unanimous. And we will now move on to town business.
Ratify, I move, we ratify the hiring of Aaron Shan, uh, Assistant Town Planner, and Daniel Moran as a municipal maintenance mechanic.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to hire two individuals. Any further discussion? I'll call for a roll call vote, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes, and I'd like to thank, uh, Town Administrator and the Assistant Town Administrator, uh, for getting somebody into this position. I've been bugging the Town Administrator for this, I think, four years.
Okay.
It takes me a lot of time to get him to do things too, so the public should not feel bad.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. It is approved. Welcome aboard, both of you. And then, Mr. Buckland, are you here to discuss the, um, HCA between the town of Wareham and Dubie?
Dubie, dubie, dubie.
Yeah, I can't believe I just did that.
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't think we need Mr. Buckland here for, for that.
Okay.
Simply, if you remember, they came in for the HC, I mean, Ken's there, but they came in for the HCA for, uh, Three Tow Road.
Right.
And that's not happening at that location. We had, we had a submission thereafter, and now through the, uh, the Development Authority, uh, the, if you will, that they would be at Four Recovery Road, so it'd be simply amending the address that was there from Three Tow Road to Four Recovery Road, uh, which is essentially one street over when you think about it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Mr. Buckland, do you choose to add anything I see that you got in, if, if, but if you don't choose to, that's fine.
Yeah, the, the, uh, there's also a facility at Ten Littlebrook Road that they are, uh, installing, so there's gonna be, uh, the delivery out of Four Recovery Road and the cultivation and manufacturer at Ten Littlebrook.
Okay, good.
Uh, move, we amend agreement between Dubie Inc. and the town of Wareham.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Oh, Mr. Munees, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, so this is the, uh, application we approved for Ten Littlebrook?
Or for Tow Road.
No, we approved it for Tow Road.
Well, yeah, and we also approved, I thought, an application for Ten.
Yes, we did.
Brook.
Yeah, it was eight, ten, and there wasn't any eight, yeah.
Was it the same, is it the same company?
No, it's not.
I didn't think so, so I'm, I'm a little confused here.
Mr. Buckland?
The, uh, they apparently got the lease for the, the property at Ten Littlebrook, and, um, that's where they're gonna put the cultivation and manufacturer. I haven't heard back from the, um, Emerald Turtle, which was the, uh, firm that had set aside, uh, uh, I think it was eight, uh, Littlebrook.
Right, but we didn't approve, we didn't approve anything for Dubie for Ten Littlebrook, correct? We approved it for Emerald Turtle.
That's correct.
That's correct.
They're just going to be doing their sales out of, um, Recovery Road?
Delivery.
Delivery, no sales, no retail at all, it's just, uh, they're gonna be delivering from that location.
Okay, so it's just, that application is just for delivery out of there, has nothing to do with the Ten Littlebrook Road.
Well, that's where they get their product from, and they make their product, is at Ten Littlebrook. They're gonna, they're gonna grow the plants, they're gonna, uh, harvest and manufacture the, the, uh, the products, and then deliver them out of, uh, Four Recovery Road.
So will there be a, uh, this is my own, um, information, so will we have a, a separate haring on that? As we're changing the, the location, whether we're going to do it to a different location as far as the growth in the, um, processing?
They went through the hearing already, um, uh, this is just the change of address for it.
Um. Could we, could we have, um?
You'll have a special, you'll have a special permit review of the, uh, of both, uh, sites for the, um, the use that they're proposing.
Right. Could, could we have Mr. Bowen opine on that?
What is the question, sir?
The question is, it, it needs to be an application for them to change their business address.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen?
Well, it seems to me there ought to be something, uh, you know, in what form does this come before the board? They're asking for your permission. Ken? How, uh, what mechanism is this in front of the board right now?
It is an amendment of the host community agreement that was signed, uh, previously for the address of, uh, Three Tow Road to the, uh, the, the new location.
Okay, and so, uh, so we have a request letter uh, on the original proposal, or, pardon me, the original host community agreement, there, there was no need for a public hearing, correct?
Uh, not for the host community agreement, there's a, 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 a community meeting that's necessary for the, uh, Canvas Control Commission licensing.
Right, yes, but that's separate, and so, we are amending a document uh, for which there was originally no need for a public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we wouldn't need a public hearing to amend it. The application is their request for an amendment, and there will be, you tell me, further hearings regarding the change. Is that correct, and what are they?
Yes, there are special permit, uh, hearings, uh, by the zoning Board of Appeals for the, uh, use of the, of the properties as proposed.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Does that, yeah, answer your question, Mr. Munees?
And do we have a contract, um, between them and the owners of Ten, um, Littlebrook Road?
That's not what I think.
I don't, I don't have a lease, I don't have a lease for that, uh, property, no.
So I'm, I'm not, I'm, you know, as long as everything's in order, I don't have a problem with it. Um, uh, it just got a little messy because they're going from one location to two separate locations. Um, one's for the, um, the sale or the delivery, recreational delivery, and the other is for growth and processing. I know normally, normally on the applications, and when we, we do this, we, we see that there's a contract, or a lease for the, or, or an agreement to purchase the building from the um, lessies or the purchasers.
The only item before us, Mr. Munees, is changing the address from Three Tow Road to Four Recovery Road. That's all that's before us. The other questions that you've raised will be brought before us at another time.
And that's just for, for recreational delivery?
That's correct.
If that's all it is, I'm fine with it.
Thank you very much.
Because I didn't see it. I didn't see the new contract, so.
I believe it was sent out. I, I saw it, but, but I, I'm, okay. Um, did I have a motion? No. May I have a motion?
You did.
I did?
Yep.
Motion made and seconded?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Munees?
I'm gonna vote present.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, three zero one, thank you.
So, I just wanna confirm, the board received that amendment ahead of time?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Yes, it did. Couple of days ago, in fact. Okay, um, discussion and possible review, possible vote to create a bylaw review committee. I had asked all of you to give me what your thoughts were. I got thoughts from one of you. So I'm going to put this off again, but I'm not gonna put it off next week. I'm going to, um, i- if you have not contributed, then I will count you present, but not having contributed, okay? So, is that understood, sirs?
Okay, so, so is this on the, um, is this on the door to door?
No, this is on the bylaw review committee.
Oh, okay, I thought you wanted us just to have the material ready, but I, I will send it to you because we'll have to discuss it anyhow.
That's correct, sir. Uh, Mr. Slaven did said, submit it, and, uh, the rest of you would, that, we'll bring it back next week, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, we have anything to say, except, uh, you know, we've set up bylaw review committees before, it's relatively soon.
Right, but I think what we were looking for, what I'm looking for is what the, um, how we would populate it with, you know, how it would be.
What's the makeup?
From, yeah, where, what, where's it made, being made up from? Okay, let's move on to D. Mr. Munees, you and I sort of went back and forth on this one. What do you think? This is the ninety-one, one.
I think it's, I, did you talk with, um, our, our chief of police about this?
No, sir, I did not.
Yeah, um, because right now, they're the ones who, uh, if they are being done, the applications or, or registration for the permission to, uh, go door to door is done through their office, um, and, um, they, they probably have uh, better ability to do it, and that's what it's stated in the, um, policy statement, right?
I think it's also in the bylaw as well.
Oh, I think it says selectman, but that's okay.
Okay.
Um, and basically, the four other, I mean, there's no application page because they take care of it.
Right.
And the other is just, um, a synopsis of the, uh, general laws and the, that are applicable to, um, anyone who wants to do it, you know, it's a sales agent or, um, some of the general laws we're looking at, talking about paper boys and people under twelve years of age or under eighteen years of age, so, uh, you know, I, I personally, short and sweet, I think the um, policy is fine, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum, do you have an opinion?
Not really.
Tropiano?
Nope.
Okay, well, I will say that I agree with short and sweet, and I think that this is a totally dup- duplicated policy that is actually covered under our bylaws and state law, and you know, I, I would choose myself to get rid of it, but it's up to you guys. So I'll accept a motion from anyone of you. If, if you don't wanna move, do anything, then the motion to do nothing would be leave it alone.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with it. Move to get rid of ninety-one, that's one.
Second. We can talk about the motion, anyway.
Motion to remove the statement or sunset it, or whatever you call it. Mr. Munees, ma- motion made in second, and Mr. Munees?
Well, um, as you, as you know, I'm, I'm not in favor of that, because I think if anything, you'd want to address, have the bylaw changed. Um, otherwise, they'll be coming to the selectman's office, and we'll have to do a forum up and um, we'll have to do, you know, process information on the applicants, um. And so, basically, um, it says no one, uh, sells, uh, she, there shall be no solicitations by commercial salesman or agents while going uninvited, house to house in the town of Wareham unless said person, a person's having first register with the board of selectmen. So if you want to transfer that responsibility to our office, um, and do away with the policy of having the police department review it, and, um, having no conditions, really. Um, the conditions are as much for us as they are for individuals who'll be doing door to door, so.
Um, yeah, they're also part of general law, so.
And we don't reference that in our, um, bylaws, though, the general laws which are pertaining to it.
Right.
Well, man.
Madam Chair, can I just?
Mr. Sullivan?
Know how it's actually happening right now?
No, because I, I haven't ever seen an application.
So here's what.
Walkers and peddlers.
They have to.
They're under state law.
They have to register, give their, uh, license plate and IDs, it goes to the police department, that go, go through that, and then my office is actually signing off and giving the final signature on it. If that works for you, that sounds great. If it, or if you have to change it, if you want it back in the selectman's office, I think this is one of those things that after the, throughout the years has been delegated down to certain offices, it really, for me, it's really no bother. The biggest port, the biggest headache of, if you will, was the last few months during the COVID pandemic initially was we were not authorizing, uh, door to door sales because we felt it was not in the public interest.
That makes sense, yeah. So what are you, so you would have us leave this policy, Mr. Sullivan?
I, you know what? The policy doesn't mention the, the town administrator, so I'm just saying what, it's, you know, the, at one point, I think the selectman and administration office were essentially the same thing.
Yes, they were.
Two different budgets, so. It, it doesn't.
Why don't we bring this back when we change the policy to correct what we're doing now and make it what we're doing now?
Yeah, I will draw my second.
There you go.
And the, and the other thing too, uh, Madam Chairman, if we could also maybe get the chief of police to weigh in on this?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, he's the one who's gonna get the calls, not us. They're not gonna call 1-800-Pete or 1-800-Gym. They're gonna call 1-800-Police, and why is this guy banging on my door, so?
Yeah, and I think, and, and just quickly, I, I think, um, Mr. Sullivan just said that they're involved in it already, the police department is.
Yeah, they are, and a lot of it is state law, so, okay.
But thank you.
Um, we will move on to discuss, and we are go, the only thing that we are doing this evening on the annual fall, fall town meeting warrant is putting things on the warrant. We are not discussing them. We are simply listing them onto the grid that was provided for you. Does that make sense?
Yep, I've got the grid printed out. Do you want me to go through it?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, the first several articles are typical ones, uh, Article one is a proven fund, in, in, you know, unless there's any questions on the first six, I don't know if everybody has the grid in front of them, but I'll read them off. A proven fund fiscal twenty-two capital plan, transfer free cash, prior year bills and deficits, uh, PEG access receipts to Wareham Community TV, five is union contracts, and six is amend the Tremont Nail Factory building and grounds.
Move, put them in the warrants.
But is there a second, a motion to include, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made to include all those. Any further discussion, all those in favor of?
No, do, yeah, I, there's a little discussion, um. We, we don't have a capital plan, I don't believe, yet. Um, do we know what we're gonna have for free cash to transfer?
We don't need to be able to answer those.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but all we're doing is putting the item on so that if and when there are figures, we will get them.
Right, then, alright, let's go, wait, let's go to number six. Um, maybe we could have some explanation on that one?
Yeah, number six is, and I'm gonna try and.
Thank you.
Pull up the, uh.
That's the Tremont Nail, uh, revolving fund to increase the rent.
It, it changes how it's structured in the use of the funds, I think.
Yeah, so if you look, it's the same, sorry.
Right, same mount.
Without having the double screens, it gets a little dim. Here we go, come on.
Yeah. We all need more devices doing it this way.
Alright, so you'll see what I did, if, if you have it in front of you. I, I bolded the only change to it. So, but I'll go through just in case anybody listening. This is the, uh, this is to amend the Tremont Nail Factory building and grounds to see if the town vote to amend, and we go through, because these are now by, uh, bylaw, so essentially, we're. And we go through because these are now by bylaw, so essentially we're deleting the existing one and putting this in there, but the only changes are what's in bold. It just, it, it's easier that way for, instead of, you know, trying to place it within the language. But if you look, it shows the first, the first section is what the revolving fund is, that's the Tremont Nail Factory Building Grounds, second is who's authorized to expend it, that's the Director of Municipal Maintenance. The third is the revenue source, so which still lists rents, fees, charges and fundraising, nothing's changed there. Here's the change, use of fund, originally it was operating costs of buildings and grounds, period. Well, as you probably all know, the Wareham Redevelopment Authority has gone out to seek a master developer. A master developer would lease this, this place for a period of time. And frankly, if they're paying a lease, those funds should not go back to the buildings and grounds, they, those would be the developers portion. So in case that were to go forward at some point to lease that, the thought was by adding, delete the period and add repayments to the Community Preservation Fund. Why? Because community preservation, you know, from, from the purchasing of the building, which is or the, the grounds, if you will, but even more so recently doing the, if you will, the, the, I'm gonna call it ground rehabilitation for, for what was there, which should have been done before we bought it originally, but those money should be paid back to community preservation, and that's, that was the thought behind it.
Thank you.
And make sure everybody understood that.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So we do have a motion for one through six to be included on the warrant and a second. Roll, roll call vote, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four, four zero zero.
Okay, that takes care of the first six. Next is a bunch of articles from community preservation. Are we bringing forward a community preservation representative for these, or we're just putting them on the warrant at this point?
Um, I, we will, we are not discussing them this evening, we are simply either putting them on the warrant or not. So the first one would be the Tremont Nail Remediation Project.
Yeah, that's just the payoff of the borrowing to fund the cleanup.
Right. Um, may I have a motion on that one?
Go move.
Second.
Okay, motion made to include and a second, all those in favor, say aye. Oh, excuse me, roll call. Try Titlebaum?
Yes.
Munees?
Yes.
Tropiano and myself, yes, Tropiano?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, four zero zero on that one. Next one is twenty twenty-one Community Preservation Fund Reserves Adjustment. That is.
What's this?
What do we got here, just, just so people understand what it is?
Move to add.
It's.
Second, this, this is to shift money around.
Yeah.
We're required to put ten percent of what we take in both from state aid and from the taxes into certain buckets, if you will, minimum amounts into each of those, so that's what this, this is just moving this around.
Motion made in seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yeah.
And myself, yes, four zero zero.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I had the light bulb went off for a second, or went on, I should say. Article six, then looking the article thereafter Tremont Nail Remediation, we're paying the borrowing from Community Preservation. In use of fund for Article six, should we include debt on there because instead of just paying back Community Preservation, they, you could pay the debt directly for that Tremont Nail Remediation Project and not have to pull it from Community Preservation. Do you know what I mean? So, so we don't have to do two, two or three steps to pay that, to pay that bond.
I understand that, but this is a submitted article.
No, 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 he's talking about going back to Article six and adding the debt repayment purpose in addition to repayments to CP's, the C, Community Preservation Funds.
Right, so after grounds, comma, debt. And that would do it, so it'd read operating cost of building gra, building and grounds, comma, debt and repayments to, to the Community Preservation Fund. I'm just thinking we could save ourselves a step, I, I didn't even think about it until I saw the two articles together.
So build, so buildings and grounds, comma, debt, comma, and repayments to Community Preservation Funds.
Yeah.
It was a scriven as error and you forgot to put that in there?
No, move, we added to the.
One, one quick question, is this your article, Mr. Sullivan?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just in case, so I'm throwing this out there, I'm sorry for a little bit of the chaos. Was there anybody that, any questions or concerns about it? Just because I'm thinking about it off the top of my head, I just, I want to make sure somebody else is seeing an issue.
That's fine, thank you.
I would like.
So let's go back to item six, may I have a motion to reassess it?
Yes, I'm moved.
And a second, please? To look again, okay, motion made in second and all those in favor.
Do you want to rescind, do you want, want to rescind the previous motion, or you just?
Yeah, we'll rescind it.
That's what we're doing.
So we have a motion to rescind in a second.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Titlebaum?
Yes.
Munees?
Yes.
White side, yes, now I'll accept that, so we are, we, we got rid of the prior motion now to move on and we're gonna now have a motion, please, to accept or add or place on the warrant.
I move.
The amended one.
Add six with the clarification Derek has added to it.
Is there a second? Motion made in seconded, Mr. Titlebaum, roll call vote?
Uh, can we, can we discuss this? Or we're not?
We're not discussing, he's just, he just changed.
Madam Chair, I, I don't mind, I, I know it's not my call, but if there's something that somebody's seeing, let's.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
I was just.
If we're writing the article on the fly, let's do it.
I was gonna ask Attorney Bowen, is, is this the best way to do that? I'm not disagreeing with what you want to do conceptually.
Yeah.
I just don't know if we just tag it on to revolving fund maintenance, blah, blah, blah. That's my only question, I, I, I agree with you, what you, your intentions are on, especially for the cleanup. So, Mr. Bowen, through you, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Through you, Madam Chairman, to select me needs. I think as long as the town administrator is convinced that the language that he has in the existing article plus the amendment is broad enough to cover the financial mechanism, then that's fine. Procedurally, in terms of going back and amending the original article, it's fair game, it's, it's his article, he's asking you to amend it. So I don't see an issue with that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just, just to clarify now on the signatories, are you a signatory on all of them anyhow? Mr. Sullivan?
I, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Would you be the signatory for debt related and expenses related to the cleanup and stuff?
You are the author of this article, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm the author of this article, municipal maintenance would be the one that's, that would be submitting the debt. The, when we borrow, so these funds have already been borrowed, except probably not permanently financed yet. You are the ones that, when Mr. Foster comes in, you, you know, and the clerk as well, you raise your right hand swear to give your firstborn.
Right, right.
Good stuff, so.
All right, I just, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Munees, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, I'll now accept a motion. Oh, we had one, so I was in the middle of a roll call, roll call vote to do it as amended by Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero, so the amendment, Mr. Derek, so Mr. Derek. Mr. Derek, could you make sure that you get that to the office first thing tomorrow morning?
I will, and I, I appreciate your indulgence on the change, and if we don't ever rent it, I guess I just wasted everybody's life for ten minutes.
No, that's all right, thank you.
Thanks for what?
Number nine.
I bored Nora to sleep over there.
Oh, yeah, great. Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, next one, return unused funds from completed projects. That's always good news, it means they didn't spend as much as we allocated to get it done, so thank you to the Community Preservation Committee. Second.
A motion made to include, and with a second, I'll do a roll call, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Munees?
Yes.
White side, yes, it is included.
Next one, Joseph W. Conway Senior, Swiss Beach Playground. This one is, would it be in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get going on the, the playground?
Correct.
We've been interested in that for a number of years, I know that.
Move to include.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion made in seconded, I will take a roll call vote, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you.
Next one up, Wicket Island Pier Restoration, this would be a hundred and fifty thousand for stone pier restoration and floating dock installation at Wickets.
I, may I make a comment on this one before I ask for a motion? The Community Preservation Act heard a request for this money under under conditions that probably would not pass the open meeting law in terms of notice, et cetera. And the chairman then brought it back to the committee with the proper notification and the proper identification. The individuals made a second presentation so that the first one, which didn't really pass muster, was totally redone and does pass muster in terms of how you are supposed to do things.
Okay. That's good.
I'll accept a motion to place it on.
So moved.
I'll second it, I mean, we'll discuss it and under recommendations later.
Thank you, motion in a second to include Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
This roll call, Mr. Tropiano?
No.
Mr. Munees?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it will go on, and as Mr. Munees points out, we will discuss it. Harbor Services Permits Rec, Permit Receipts, number twelve.
Yep, this is for twenty-three thousand for outboard motors.
Move to include.
Second, motion made in seconded. And for the discussion, Mr. Sullivan, do you choose to speak?
I think that was, that's not, the motors are, that's the debt payment on it, right?
Oh, wait a minute, wrong one, I jumped the gun here. No, this is fifty-eight thousand for the, the, this one.
Is fifty-eight seven fifty-four.
For the floating docks.
Depth service.
Right.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second, motion made in seconded, any further discussion, I will accept a roll call vote, Mr. Munees?
Oh, I'm, oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is on four zero zero, the next one, thirteen is the twenty-three thousand dollars for the patrol boat outboard motors.
So moved. Add it to the warrant.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to add to the warrant, any further questions? I will go for a roll call, Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Titlebaum?
Yes.
And white side, yes, thank you very much. And then the next one, which is harbor services, is fourteen thousand dollars for training equipment.
Move to include.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any further questions? I will call for a roll call vote, Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Titlebaum?
Yes.
Myself, yes, thank you. And then number fifteen is a special legislation funding for the Wareham Area Housing Trust.
Affordable Housing Trust.
Fair, I'm sorry, yeah, Affordable Housing Trust.
This came from Mr. Munees's committee, so I would ask the courtesy of hearing from him about it.
Could we have?
I think that's, or we're just putting him on the warrants or not?
I just would like a brief discuss, brief, brief summary of what it represents, not a discussion, Mr. Munees, okay?
Oh, it represents a request that fifty percent of the net proceeds, let me make sure I'm on the right one here. Yeah, fifty percent of the net proceeds from the sale of tax titled property only be deposited and, and into the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust account to be expended by the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust Committee for the purposes of funding programs related to affordable housing or to take any action relative there to.
Thank you so much, sir. Anybody have any questions about the intent of the articles? I'll accept a motion.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to put it on the warrant.
Is there a second to the motion?
Um, I'll second it, just because I think it deserves the courtesy of a vote.
Okay, thank you, I will do a roll call vote, Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
I'm gonna vote present on this one, I just need to know what the money would be for.
Mr. Tropiano?
No.
And myself. Uh, no, because I don't know how the program would be managed or taken care of.
That's okay, I'll, we'll do as a citizen's petition next time.
Yeah, well, I think if you had a budget there, or if you had a.
I don't have any money. It's just like when you do it with the redevelopment authority, we don't ask for budgets and stuff, but that's okay, we'll be back, we'll be back.
Committee be doing.
It's okay.
And the second one from Wareham, Wareham Area Housing Trust would be to modify the quorum requirement, and that is, Mr. Munees, do you care to a brief summary of that?
Well, yeah, to see if the town will vote to change. The town of Wareham bylaws, division seven, article three, subsection seven, from four trustees of constituted quorum. But a majority vote of the full membership should be required to prove any action to three trustees should constitute a quorum. Majority of vote of full memberships are required to prove any motion or take any action there too. For a five-member board, we're required to have four members for a quorum. And it can be difficult at times, but we can make and do business and approve things with only three members.
Move to include.
Second.
Thank you for the description, Mr. Munees, any further discussion, roll call vote, Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Then we have a warrant article from a citizen which.
Yeah, do you want me to just go, go through those briefly?
Yes, really.
Because these go on.
They go on up by right, so.
Yeah, they go on by operation of law.
Right.
So I just want to pull up the submissions so I can attribute them because I'm just gonna say what the article, the title of the article is and who the lead petitioner is.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one second, we just get that going here. We, we got a couple more today, so. First one, warrant article submission amendment to current procedure, citizens petition. The lead petitioner on this is Peter Dunlop. Let's see, Zoom meetings. The lead petitioner on this one is Jody Santa Gate. Uh, let's see, let me go back. The next one is to change the makeup of the Wareham Redevelopment Authority and manner of selection to the W R A, this is from Brenda Ekstrom. There's one on here for collection of fees and penalties for earth removal in the town of Wareham. That one was submitted.
Barry Cosgrove.
Yes, Barry Cosgrove. And the final one is repurpose the John W. Deacon School for uses to benefit the community. And that one, I believe.
Leslie Edward Davis.
Was Leslie, yeah. So those, so those are the five petition articles, they go on by operation. So those, those are the five petition articles, they go on by operation of law. Uh, I'm told the signatures will be confirmed on Monday, and I've made arrangements to meet with the clerk and get the constable there at three o'clock on Monday to get the posting done and get the delivery to the chairman of the finance committee and the town moderator, because we still have to do those things, so.
Thank you, and I would ask that, um, my peers, Mr. Munees, Mr. Tropiano, Mr. Title Bomb, and myself to all make sure that you get to town hall within the next forty-eight hours, please, so that you can sign the attestation that will, we will need on Monday, okay?
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, so there are in fact twenty articles going on. Excellent, thank you. Uh, town administrators report.
No, no.
What?
We gotta close the warrant, right?
Oh, yes, excuse me.
We better do that, could get interesting if we don't do that.
Yeah, okay, um, is there a motion to close the warrant?
So moved.
Second, motion made and seconded, roll call vote, Munees?
Yes.
Title Bomb?
Yes.
Tops?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is closed, thank you so much.
Now the town.
Now the town administrator can speak. Now the town administrator can administrate.
That's not done here.
Okay.
The children rule rules there.
Yes, we know.
Roughly over the last six weeks, I just wanted to, uh, go over the, the COVID numbers, and this does not include the probable, but, uh, you know, going, going from backwards forward, so we started off with thirty-seven positive, then went up to fifty-nine, slight dip to fifty, then sixty-one, and now, excuse me, over the last five weeks. This week, we're up to seventy-eight percent, which is a twenty-eight percent increase over the, the previous week, so, um, these are some of the, these are some spiking, um, I didn't check out who was the percentage of of, uh, positive versus vaccinated, but, you know, it's, uh, a lot of, a lot of us feel that, a lot of people feel that it's over with, but we know there's, uh, you know, there's, there's still to take precautions. I don't urge any sort of, you know, overkill, just, I think it's, uh, well, we'll speak about that another time, I, I'm thinking, for myself, for my family, we certainly have our, our opinion on how to handle things, we're still keeping the mask mandates in town hall, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll see what comes on down from high, but, uh, you know, please take precautions. Please were, please, you know, consider, from our, uh, previous, we actually lost a, uh, a neighbor last week who had, uh, been positive, uh, he was unvaccinated, so it's, you know, there, there's a lot of rest still out there, and.
May I just interrupt you for a second? South Coast does now have four locations that are, um, administering all free of the approved vaccinations, and you can go on, you just type in southcoast.org backslash COVID, and you can sign up, takes seven and a half minutes to do. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, go ahead.
I believe Wareham has the next to the worst vaccination rate in Plymouth County.
That's correct.
So, um, I, I don't, you know, I don't know what the issues are, um, all the pharmacies are, um, providing vaccinations pretty much, and so, just everybody, you know, give it a second thought or, or thought, and, um, get vaccinated as long as you can, there's no outstanding issues otherwise, um, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Sullivan, go ahead.
Yeah, one other thing, you know, that sixty-five and over now booster shot, and a lot of the guys, a lot of the people are starting to get notified by their primary, get that booster shot, sixty-five and over.
Correct. Mr. Sullivan, we'll go for.
I do wanna, I do wanna point out the mysterious Alan Slaven person in the chats, I'm, I'm, Sandy, I believe that's you, so.
Yes, it is.
People don't think we've, you know, moved Alan to the chat.
Yes, that was clarified at the beginning of the meeting.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Uh, there is, I'm asking that the Board of Selectmen consider a a, a financial policy, and, uh, in twenty twenty-nine, the town will fully fund its unfunded pension obligation, and that's through, through Plymouth County, we, we have the assessments every year, and they go up, and the goal is to y- you know, fully fund it, twenty twenty-nine's a little sooner than what needs to be done by law, and that's, that's great. I think that's a perfect thing. Uh, what I'm asking you is the Board of Selectmen to consider, because this will help us with our OPEB liability, which right now exceeds a hundred million dollars. Uh, is to, to look forward and say that, well, I'll read the policy out to you, because your, your knowledge of these is enough where this should be self-explanatory, but the, um, the town will continue to follow the Commonwealth Funding Policy of Providing for a Pension Funding Schedule through our retirement system to achieve full funding by the end of calendar year twenty twenty-nine. This funding will be provided in each annual budget authorization within the fiscal year levy limitations. That's what we do now as part of the, part of the budget. After fiscal twenty thirty, the retirement system projects a material reduction in the annual funding schedule for the member towns as the unfunded amortizations will cease to exist. As such, the town will redirect a hundred percent of the reduction in the annual funding costs for the retirement system to increasing the annual appropriation of OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. In other words, that's the health insurance, and for a little bit, the, uh, small life insurance, but it's really the health. Uh, in this manner, the town anticipates utilizing levy capacity that becomes available from achieving full funding status of the retirement system unfunded liability to increase the level, the levy funding of the OPEB unfunded liability. So essentially, what you're doing is saying, pledging now that that's will be done in the future, it'd be a selectman's policy that will help with our, with our, um, can help with things such as the bond rating and our discount coupon, which we get right now from the, uh, from our, uh, the auditors of our OPEB liability, would be go from three point seven five percent to five point seven five, which is a big jump for us. Um, some of the assumptions have changed, believe it or not, even with COVID, they've, uh, they've changed the, the lifespan, if you will, so our OPEB shot up closes, going shoot up close to twenty-six million dollars, I believe, so this would help put a dent into that, and, um, interestingly enough, if you did this, if the town in, uh, twenty twenty-nine or twenty thirty, what have you, did that, you would fully fund your pension obligation by twenty forty-two, which is pretty amazing, um, it's a lot of forward thinking, we get some benefits now, and it, it gives you, you know, it doesn't tie the future's hands, whatever, whatever will happen will happen in the future, but shows we're at least considering it and putting plans together. So what I'd like to be able to do, if there's any, any questions, I'll go over it. Otherwise, I'd submit this to you for, are we, we're having a meeting next week?
Yes, sir.
For the, I think it should be an agenda item to, uh, to.
Okay, could you, when you send Cassie the updated article, just ask her about that too?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think one of the things that this speaks to is that the financial controls and financial forward planning of this town have they really are extraordinary. I am not aware of too many towns who can say they've even addressed the OPEB issue. Um, when we first started talking about it, I think we all shuddered and didn't know how you could bail water out of a sinking boat at all, let alone that fast, but we have made great strides, uh, with Mr. Sullivan and his team of professional department heads, and I just want to say thank you so much, sir, for getting us into a, what I consider to be superior a financial condition at the moment.
You know, Mr. Foster, Ms. Lazon, their staffs, and, and, you know, all the departments have worked very well on this, it's, it's on them that this, this comes together, so, but I appreciate it, and we'll certainly pass that on.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say something here, if you wouldn't mind.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I stopped in and took care of a couple of things in town hall earlier, and I stopped in and saw, um, Mr. Sullivan, and he explained what, um, the plan was, and we had conversation, and I, and I know bond rating is, is extremely important, but we also have to remember that we have services and things, we should provide the town, so we can't always, we shouldn't just sacrifice services and other things to, to get that next step in a bond rating. We're doing well now, I'm not complaining, I just, this is, this is my thought on it, and we, we don't really bind you know, future boards.
Right.
Or, or town administrators, I understand what he's trying to do, and I agree with it. I'm just, you know, there's a balance there, so, thank you.
I just would like to add, and I, and I hear you, Mr. Munees, um, there is one very, um, unpopular way of increasing revenue, and that is to do an override, either an operational override or just a general override. The other thing is to attract businesses and concerns that bring income through income tax, property tax to the town of Wareham, and so that we, we do have opportunities to increase revenue base just by having the town grow.
And I think, I think it all comes down to planning, you know, for now and for the future, and what we think is best, or the citizens think is best for this town, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, are you done, done?
I am, um, done, done.
Okay, good, liaison initiative reports, Mr. Munees?
Oh, been quiet, so, um, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Title Bomb?
Uh, I guess nothing to report, other than that, the redevelopment authority, uh, didn't submit a request for an article regarding, uh, Tremont Nail at this point, uh, because both the authority and the developer want to do some outreach to the community to talk about the developer's plans and vision for the property first, uh, before we go to town meeting, uh, to get a long-term lease authorized, so that's why that didn't appear uh, today.
Thank you, Mr. Tropiano?
All set today.
Thank you, I just want to say, gentlemen, that I'm not going anywhere, I just want to say that I think that we have proven to the residents of the town of Wareham, that we are acting in the best interests of the town, that we have civil conversations among ourselves, and it is clear that some of us disagree from time to time, but I want to congratulate us all on keeping the tenor of our conversations, um, professional and civilized, and in the best interest of the town.
Nicely put, Mrs. Whiteside.
Thank you, okay, how about any minutes or anything? No bills or documents?
I have.
Go ahead.
I, I wish, um, I make a motion that we, we were all there, by the way, I approved the meeting minutes of August tenth, twenty twenty-one, and August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further questions? All those in favor of approving those two sets of minutes, say aye.
Roll call.
Well, yeah. Title Bomb?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yep.
Munees?
Yes.
Thank you, and myself, yes, thank you.
Session, we're gonna skip the ninth, and we're gonna do.
We're gonna skip the fourteenth.
You sure?
I'm positive.
Okay.
All right.
All right, I move, we approve the September ninth, uh, twenty twenty-one minute of executive session.
Thank you, and hold?
And hold, oh, yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further questions, comments, concerns, roll call vote, Mr. Munees?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Title Bomb?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Tropiano?
Yeah.
Thank you, and myself, yes, so four zero zero, approve and hold.
It's that time.
Mr. Slaven isn't here, so, Mr. Munees, do you want to step in there and?
Uh, those are big shoes to fill, you know.
I know.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion made to adjourn, um, Mr. Title Bomb?
Yes.
Tropiano?
Yes.
Munees?
Yes.
Whiteside, yes, thank you very much, gentlemen, I very much appreciate everything that you do on behalf of the town, good night, Wareham.
Night.
I know.